I'll now call this special meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. Council, you have before you copy the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. And there's also two consent items included on there. I would entertain a motion at this time to adopt.
Move to adopt the agenda with the consent items?
A second.
I have a motion and a second in the discussion. Here and now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have one item for discussion, and it's the non-consent item, and this is the city property in the commons cell of that property. And Dr. Woodruff, if you please present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we'd like to talk to you about the possibility of selling some city property that's in the commons. As we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that in a 2020 study, it was identified that Onslow County had about 1,400 affordable housing units that were needed. By federal definition, affordable housing is housing with monthly rent no greater than 30% of your monthly income. Before we get into the city property, let me give you a short update. You will recall that several weeks ago, when we had our last meeting, it was informed to the public that we would have a city fund through Onslow Community Outreach of $20,000 to help persons who needed assistance in relocating. At that time, when someone asked, "When that money's gone, what would happen?", I said, "Well, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it." And guess what? We've come to it, and I'm proud tonight to tell you that we've also added an additional $20,000. As of this afternoon, we have now helped 15 families relocate from Town Center through the money available through the city. We've also expended almost $18,000 of that money. And earlier today, the Finance Department approved a budget transfer that will add an additional $20,000. And when we get to the next bridge of that $20,000 being spent, you will probably see me or a better-looking person like our city attorney, John, you can thank me later, for recommending another $20,000. But the program is working, and we are seeing people voluntarily relocate from Town Center. One of the unfortunate things, though, that has happened at the Town Center is that the private sector negotiations for parcel purchases, they've fallen apart. To our knowledge, three different proposals that they were working with, with the owner, they've all ceased, for various reasons. No need to get into that, other than just to report that they have ceased. Redevelopment guidance document has been prepared by the city attorney and myself, so that the owner of Town Center Apartments and anyone who might be interested in purchasing all or a portion of it, we are finalizing a redevelopment document that explains about redevelopment of all 90 acres through a master plan with mixed-use development, being brought back to you for approval as a planned unit development rezoning, and some of the other advantages. When that document is finished, it will be shared with you and obviously be a public document. Tonight, though, we have a new opportunity, and that is with Carolina Statewide Development LLC. We have with us this evening Mr. Maes and Mark McCloskey, who are with that company. At the end, if there are questions that you may have about this, I'm sure they'd be happy to ask. We want to talk to you about two projects. One is a 168 multi-family unit affordable project. The other is a 72-unit senior affordable project. This is an aerial of the commons. To orient you, you will notice in the left-hand side, that is the Western Boulevard intersection with Jacksonville Parkway. As you come straight across, that is Gateway coming to Lake Bittner. And then, if you look at the bottom right, you will see P1 and P2. That stands for Project 1 and Project 2. This is the proposed land that the city has that is proposed to be sold for these affordable projects. Let's discuss the details of Project 1. The city is the owner. The purchaser would be Carolina Statewide Developer LLC. Location, we've just shown you, and it is roughly 11.4 acres. We do not have a final legal description, and if we get to the point of actually closing on this document at a later date, then the city will expend the necessary money to formally survey and get an accurate legal description. We believe, and the developer agrees, it is generally 11.4 acres. The proposal is to build multi-story buildings for affordable family living, 168 units. Project 2, and I'm going to go back one, you will notice in the lower right-hand corner, you have P1, you have P2. The line that separates those is a stream system. So the area in P2 is obviously behind what used to be Toys R Us. I believe it's now a furniture store.
Kimball's.
Kimball's. But those are the two parcels. Project 1 is on P1. Project 2, the senior, is on P2. P2, seller, purchaser the same, general location, acreage 6.4, and the proposal is to build 72 affordable senior units. This is a general concept. Mark has drawn this up. You will notice that it shows the layout from Commons Drive and Gateway. You will also know that this is nothing but a concept plan. They put this concept plan to see if they could make this number of units work on the property they do believe that it would be. However, I want everyone and the record to show, this is only a concept. Once we get to the point of closing, they will have developed the final concept. So what we believe, it will be something similar to this. It will fit in with the neighborhood very nicely. The considerations: city-owned vacant forestry land, it's bordered by commercial, multiple-family amphitheater, and city park. So let's go back to the aerial. You will notice where Marine Chevrolet is, bottom center of the aerial. Just below that is commercial property. And further around to the right, and just barely shown, that is a multiple-family complex. Then across the street from Commons Loop, you can see the city park. And then across Gateway, you can see more of the city park, Richard Ray, the amphitheater. In my professional opinion, as a planner, I can tell you this is an ideal location for multiple-family. Why? Because it's surrounded by either uses that multiple-family would be compatible with, or it is surrounded by property that is already developed. That's the nice thing. And in this particular case, if you look at other options for developing it, they are few. Let's go back to the considerations. It would be difficult to develop for recreation fields. Why? Because if you remember the aerial, it shows that that property is split by the stream. We do not believe that that stream is going to be a major impediment for development. That is something that Carolina statewide developers will have to look at. It is difficult because it is divided by the stream. And the other part is, for rectangular fields, which is what the city really needs, this property really doesn't lay itself out for that. Considerations continued. We've had the appraised value established just this past week. There are limited opportunities for other land use. I don't think you would bring commercial that far in off of Western. You certainly would not build single-family homes there. It does address a community need, and in the document, if you approve this this evening, there are restrictive covenants that guarantee that both of these parcels would be used for affordable housing for a minimum of 30 years. They are requesting a discount purchase. Mr. Carter will address this in a minute, but let me go back to the projects. Project 1 is 168 units of affordable multiple-family. The value has been established by an appraisal. The appraisal shows a value of $125,065 per acre. At 11.4 acres, that's $1.422 million. The discount purchase request, this is based upon a pro forma that has been prepared and reviewed, prepared by the developer and reviewed by us. They're asking for a discount from $125,000 and change to $80,000 per acre. The reason for that in the pro forma is it shows that they have to stay within the rental ranges of affordable housing. What that means is that many of these multiple-family houses will be in the rental area of the low 200s up to...
600s.
About 650. That range, when you put it towards a $30 million project, makes it very difficult to pay $125,000 per acre. What they are asking is a discount value on parcel 1 of $80,000 per acre. If you agree, that's a sales price of $912,000, plus or minus, because remember, we don't have the exact acreage. On Project 2, 72 senior units. Again, appraisal has established the value. You will notice that this parcel does not have the value of the larger parcel. It's $105,007. Estimated value is $671,000. Again, we've looked at the pro forma. In this case, they believe they can actually pay more per acre, and that is because of some of the guidelines that they have to meet on the multiple-family. The discount price they're asking here is $90,000 per acre. Recommended sales price, $576,000 for the 6.4 acres. In summary, two projects: discount purchase request, Project 1, $80,000 per acre; Project 2, $90,000 per acre. And combined, they would produce 140 affordable units, and the city would receive $1.488 million. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to the city attorney, who will give you some comments and guidance regarding your role as the council, but also an interesting additional role you pay, you play, and also your ability to discount. Mr. Carter?
Go back to, Richard, before you turn, could you back one slide?
Yes, sir.
So it's 140 units?
240. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You have to remember, Gail doesn't let me do math in public, and she didn't prove these. You're correct. It's actually 240 units, my error. So again, 168 affordable multiple-family and 72 affordable senior for a grand total of 240 units. Thank you very much for that clarification. Mr. Carter?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a couple pages of things I want to cover with you, and I'm going to stop about halfway through and make sure that you're absorbing it, and if you're not, we'll go over it again and so forth. This is important stuff. When you walked into council chambers this evening, I'm sure you thought you were coming in just as you normally do. You're just coming in as the mayor and the city council, to sit as the city council and do the city's business. But tonight, in actuality, you're also asked to sit as a housing authority and a redevelopment commission. North Carolina Statute 160D, and if you'll remember, go back, Ryan stood here a while, a few weeks ago, and we told you the state legislature had come up with a whole new statute for planning, 160D. Well, this is part of that, which was moved over from 168. Okay, but anyway, this statute and 160D states the following: "A governing board may exercise directly those powers granted by law to local government redevelopment commissions." So you can not only be a city council, you can be a redevelopment commission. And by the way, you are both. And you are both because back in 2004, a prior city council designated the city council to carry out the responsibilities of being a housing authority and a redevelopment commission, when they adopted the Jacksonville City Code Section 2-401. You'll find that in our city code and several sections thereafter. 2-401 states the following: "Pursuant to the authority contained in general statute," that time it's 168, Article 22, which now is 160D, "the city council does hereby create a redevelopment commission. The city council hereby designates itself to perform the powers, duties, and responsibilities of a redevelopment commission." And in the subsequent section, it says that your responsibility covers the entire city limits of the city of Jacksonville. So what does this mean? Well, by being a redevelopment commission, you're now governed by a different statute, not 168, not 160D. We're going to move over to 157-9. And this statute that covers redevelopment commissions has a blanket exemption from property disposition procedures such that we've all talked about and dealt with: upset bids, you know, we have to have upset bids when we sell property and so forth. I'm telling you tonight, you don't have to do that if you're acting as a redevelopment commission. This is what the statute says. Quote, "No provisions with respect to the acquisition, operation, or disposition of property by other public bodies shall be applicable to an authority unless the legislature shall specifically so state," and that hasn't been stated. So what we've told you you can't do as a city council, we're tonight telling you can do as a redevelopment commission. Because conveyance procedures can be ignored by a redevelopment commission or by a properly designated council that's exercising the power of a redevelopment commission. A redevelopment commission, which you are, may therefore convey property to any entity, whether nonprofit or for-profit, and this company here tonight is a for-profit company, let's be upfront. You can convey that to them for less than fair market value, provided the subsidy, that is the amount for less than fair market value, whatever discounted rate you may give them per acre, as been discussed by Dr. Woodruff, goes toward the constitutional public purpose of making housing affordable to low-to-moderate-income persons and does not amount to an unconstitutional gift to this recipient, this entity who's asking for this. Other provisions of the housing law must be followed, such as the requirement to ensure that housing projects are priced as low as possible and that revenues from housing projects don't fund other activities. Conditions like these are contained, to some extent, in the proposed purchase and sales agreement, but even more specifically, in the restrictive covenants that you have before you tonight. No, you would not have to vote twice. You don't have to vote once as a council or once as a redevelopment commission and so forth. This is what the statute says in reference to that. It says that "the performance recommendation or approval thereof, once by the municipal governing body," that is the city council, "shall be sufficient to make such performance recommendation or approval valid and legal." I will stop right there and give you just a moment to make sure that you've absorbed what I've said. Again, you do not have to go with upset bids. You can sell directly, private sale, and you can actually do a discount. Any questions? Let me continue.
Let me ask.
Yes, sir.
You say we can act as a housing authority?
We don't have a housing authority, so the council has been designated, the housing authority is a redevelopment commission.
Right.
The council has been designated by statute, that is North Carolina statute, that 160D statute, as well as the city code, to be a redevelopment commission, which allows you to do these things that we're talking about, that is, to sell the land and so forth. You're certainly not equipped to be a housing authority and manage housing and rents and so forth. I'm not suggesting that at all. That would be another step, but again, you certainly have the right this evening, if you so desire, to sell one or both of these parcels to the entity, and you could do that for a discounted price.
Let me ask you another question, and maybe you should give me, you can give me some history concerning housing development, I mean, housing authority. At one time, did it come up before concerning Jacksonville actually having a housing authority, and then that was given to a regional group or something?
And I'm not the one to speak on that with direct knowledge, but it is my understanding, and Tracy Jackson would be the one, that there is a regional housing authority that does cover this region, if you will, and manages things like that. But again, that does not take away from your authority that I'm saying you have tonight as a redevelopment commission by statute as well as by the city code. Let's talk about how other cities deal when they have surplus land and they desire to market that for affordable housing. Many cities go out and do an RFP. RFP stands for Request for Proposals. They would go out to affordable housing developers, because that's a unique category of developers, if you will, and they would ask them to make proposals as how they would develop a certain acreage, what, if anything, they would pay for that, and any other conditions they might want to make. And you'd get several, hopefully, several folks to make that. We've not done that in this case, and the primary reason we've not done that in this case is because the county is offering, pursuant to an RFQ, which requests for qualifications, they're offering $5 million financing for affordable housing. And the key there is that that has to be submitted to the county. If you weren't interested in that $5 million, you've got to submit it by October the 14th. So there is not adequate time to go out to an RFQ, or an RFP, I'm sorry. And we do use those terms interchangeably. But again, Mr. Maes' letter was attached to the agenda item, and I hope each of you had a chance to read that. Because in one paragraph, he says the following: "We will be responding to the Onslow County RFQ, which is offering additional funding for an affordable housing development, and these funds will be an integral component in the success of this project." Now, what he's talking about there is, again, applying for the $5 million, especially toward P1, the 11-plus acres. Okay? That's the key right there. That particular project is worth the $5 million could go for there. And he has told us, and he's here tonight, he can speak, whatever, that if he's unsuccessful in getting that $5 million or some amount of that, that this project, the 11 acres, may not be a go, because that is necessary. There's also a component here that, when you apply to the county, that one of the considerations is, it's not just this wild idea, "I want to do affordable housing somewhere in Onslow County, will you give me the $5 million or some portion thereof?" Mr. Maes, if you were to approve this proposal tonight, he would have a specific designated site that he would be able to tell the county that he is intending to use this money to build upon. Now, let me go back. He's saying it would not be feasible, in his letter, or words to that effect, and this is because, and again, they can speak on this too, the commons is not what I refer to as an opportunity zone. There are certain zones in the city of Jacksonville that you get more tax credit for if you develop affordable housing in. The commons is not one of those areas. Okay? So again, this is an essential part, I believe, and Mr. Maes and Mr. McCloskey can speak to that. But again, pointed out, and Dr. Woodruff alluded to this a moment ago in his letter, affordable housing units in Onslow County and the Jacksonville, and his letter says, goes from $226 to $620 per month. This is considerably lower than the same type units would rent for in Charlotte and Raleigh. Our county is a, quote, "low-income county," and it therefore makes it hard to develop affordable housing unless you are in an opportunity zone or you get some kind of grant like this $5 million from the county to make this thing work financially. Again, you can see the, and you're going to see some photographs here of prototypes that they've done in other areas, but again, when you're collecting just the 200 and whatever the discounted rate is there, it's monthly rent, it's not the kind of money you need to service the debt there. So it is important that they get this $5 million. I want to point out to you that the city has allocated significant money during the last 20 years, not to Mr. Maes, but to another company, and maybe other companies, I should say, for affordable housing projects in the way of low-interest loans, et cetera, especially when the city was receiving more money from the community development block grant funds. We no longer get that, as y'all know so intimately, because you've been told that it's been reduced, reduced, reduced. So the city's not in a position to do this kind of financing with the monies that they get through CD loans because of that reduction in funding. But as previously stated, the redevelopment commission, you are permitted to sell by private sale, no requirement of RFP, because I've told you you could sell it by private sale to a for-profit, nonprofit, you could discount it, et cetera, as long as you ensure, that is for affordable housing with the restrictive covenants and through the contracts. And I point all this out, though, because, again, you're not doing an RFP, because someone may complain. Someone could say, "Look, if I'd known y'all were selling that land, I would've come up there and offered you $110,000 per acre," whatever. You never know these days. But if someone could complain, but again, you're within your legal rights to do what you're doing tonight if you decide to do that. But again, the primary reason for bringing this forward to you at this time is because if that October 14th deadline on that $5 million, that's the least for them to have an opportunity to go into that kind of consideration. Now, prior to this discussion ever coming about the commons land or us even ever sitting down with Mr. Maes or anyone else, Dr. Woodruff and I met with Commissioner Bennett and Foster at their request. They came in and they wanted to talk and get an update on Town Center Apartments, and we met with them. And at that meeting, Dr. Woodruff and I both impressed upon them as county commissioners, when they get this information in on October 14th, they need to consider giving that $5 million to one entity. Because if they divide it up, a million here, a million here, a million here, they may, a year or two years from now, still be holding the whole $5 million, because none of these projects may be financially feasible and viable. And we impressed upon them that we need affordable housing here in Onslow County and here in Jacksonville, and they need to really consider making that. Again, to go to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency and to make a project like this work with the low rental rates that I've already mentioned, someone's going to need this kind of money to make it work, especially if this is what I call a non-opportunity zone. Hopefully, they'll follow that advice, and we'll get some affordable housing in Jacksonville and Onslow County. But to summarize, again, you as a council, acting as a redevelopment commission, can make a private sale to an affordable housing entity for less than fair market value, if you so desire. Any questions on the second part? I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, John. These are examples of developments that this company's actually built. These are not pictures taken somewhere else that they had no affinity for, no relationship for. So when you look at this, you can see the multi-story. These are similar to all of the developments up and down Western Boulevard. Very beautiful, they're quality. One of the things that Mr. Maes has said to me is that if you're going to build apartments, it doesn't matter whether they're for rent or whether they're for discount affordable rent. You have to build quality. Why? Because people are going to be in them. People are going to use them. These units not only will meet the building code like any other unit, but they have to be built to the same standards as all the other multiple-family in the community. Why? Again, because this developer is going to own these units. And we all know, if you build cheap in the beginning, you're going to have a lot of maintenance issues. If you build quality in the beginning, you will have less maintenance issues. You can see the quality with clubhouse and general offices, parking, multi-story. These will not have elevators. Now, the second thing I want to stress to you is, if you decide to move forward with this, I want to make sure you understand that there are two different sales agreements: one for parcel 1, which is the 168 multiple-family, and one for parcel 2, which is the 72. And they total, again, Mr. Thomas, how many units?
240.
240 units. What Mr. Maes has said to us is that if he's not successful in getting the $5 million from the county, that project is no longer financially feasible. He will testify that to you in a moment, if you desire to hear comments from him. It is their belief that they can move forward with the senior project, which once again will help a lot of people, 72 senior units. Let's talk about, if you agree to sell, how you as a city council can use the money for any legal city purpose. When the commons was purchased back in, I believe, Mr. Bittner, 1985, something like that, it was purchased by general fund dollars. It was not purchased by recreation dollars, although we have certainly built some wonderful recreation facilities there. That money is available to you for any public purpose. I would hope that what you would do is look at this to pay for other capital assets that could build the community and quality of life in the future, but that's not tonight's discussion. discussion. I want to make sure that you understand that this money will not be reserved. It's not automatically going to A, B, or C. It's available to you as a council to spend any way, any legal way that you decide to spend it. The last comment that I would make is to remember this. We have an issue with affordable housing. Y'all were very kind to citizens the last meeting to move the, what I'll call the deadline down to June 30th. This project is not going to solve that deadline. What this project or similar projects do, it addresses the bigger picture. It addresses the fact that we in this community need affordable housing. And in all fairness, in all disclosure, if you agree to these two agreements tonight, you will actually not see any one of these units moved into for most likely until the beginning of 2024, or maybe even later. Why? Because this is a grant process. It will take them more than a year to go through all of the paperwork and all of the bonds, then getting the architectural plans finished, and then getting it constructed. So I don't want anyone to think that this is the silver bullet that suddenly solves the issues with Town Center. It does not. That issue will be back in front of you probably in April or May, but that's a different night's story. The last thing I'd mention to you on this is, once again, look at the property. It is a discount. There's no question about that. Why should you consider it? That's your contribution to affordable housing. You could build on both of these sites conventional housing that's not affordable. What you'd be doing in these sales agreements tonight is saying that you as a city council are supporting affordable housing, that you as a city council are discounting the price, that you as a city council are putting real money into these projects, and hopefully the county commission will do the same. Questions that you may have for John or for myself? Would you like to hear from Mr. Mades?
If Mr. Mades has comments, yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow commissioners. Appreciate this time to come to here to make this presentation. We have something here that we've never had an opportunity to do in Jackson, Onslow County, and that is bring a bond deal to Onslow County. And the only reason we can do this, and I've said this in my letter, is because of the opportunity that the county has afforded us to give us this $5 million. And I'm sure some of you are saying, "Well, that's a lot of money." But when you look at a bond deal, it just, it's not as easy as, these deals shake out into 4% bond deals and 9% credit deals. So just a little explanation on that. The bond deals are 168 units, and we've never had opportunity in Onslow County to do one of those, because our rent structures are low. You usually see these in large metropolitan areas, and you also see that those metropolitan areas end up giving money to these projects to make them happen. So that being said, we have a unique opportunity. Well, I don't think we'll ever have it again for a long period of time. So what's so exciting is that we got two projects that we can talk about. You know, the seniors, we haven't had a, the last senior project, we actually built here in town, which was Glendale.
Glendale?
Glendale, excuse me, Glendale out on Western Boulevard, and that's been 10 years ago. So there's a big need here for senior housing as well. This is a great site for senior housing. We got the bus stop there, we got parking, and we got the community shopping close by. So it's, all sets up for pretty much a home run when it comes to affordable housing. The good thing is that we are going to be able to start helping the Town Center folks around June, because we'll be finishing one of our projects that's inside of City Limits, which is out in the southwest area, and we'll be making available there 80 units. So that project will come on. We've just been approved in August for a second project at that same location, and that's another 72 units. That project will be finished sometime probably in early '23, the second project. So we're excited about it. This is a unique opportunity. We've run the numbers. I mean, what we offered, I will tell you, there's still some upside potential that we've got to go find some other monies for. We still are not been able to, to fund it completely, but we feel good enough about it, we can make it work. So it's an exciting time to be in the affordable housing market, especially in Onslow and Jacksonville, because we can provide so many units to the folks that need them. And as Dr. Woodruff said, there was 1,400 units of need here in this town. I think it's more, especially with what's happened here in U River now. So I'm willing to talk about, ask, answer any of your questions. I mean, we can talk about the differences in the prices and all that kind of stuff, but we can, I think we can justify the numbers if we need to.
Any questions of Mr. Mades?
So the gateway property that you all built, is that considered affordable housing?
Yes, sir.
And how many units is that?
So there's, we have actually three projects now going on in the city. We own the one out on Fox Horn, which is, I'm, 56 units? 56 units, the first project we did here in town that we own ourselves, was 56 units over on Fox Horn. We own that project. It's 100% occupied. Again, the second one that we're completing that we own is out on Blue Creek School Road. That's 80 units. It's going to be through by June of this year. Would have been through earlier, but they had this little thing called lumber prices that went through the roof, and so we had to pull the project back, wait for the lumber prices to come back down a little bit, so now we're under construction, and our anticipation date there is in June, so of '22. So that's 80 units. And then the third one, what I was just talking about, there's a sister one right beside that one on Blue Creek School Road that we just got awarded in August, and that's 72 units. So all in all, you got 152 that we're going to be bringing onboard plus these. So it's a big need, and it's, it's a great opportunity to fill this need, and I don't think we'll ever have this opportunity again on the bond side.
I guess the senior units are all at one level as well, right?
The singles, much time, with this particular sing, what we're going to do on this project, and what we've done in the past and other projects, is we're going to have one building, and it'll be 72 units with elevators in it. So that's pretty exciting. We've done one of these. We're getting ready to do another one in Fayetteville, just like this. And so to me, it excites me on the seniors, because we haven't had a single senior project in 10 years here. And so I think there's a big need there. It's going, it's a great location for it, and as well as for the families, multifamily as well. Bus stops are really crucial in these deals, and as you guys know, there's a bus stop right across the street there in the commons, recreation area. So it's, it all fits really well, and so that's what makes it, these will win, are going to win. The bond deal, it actually wins if it gets, if the numbers work.
Explain what you mean by win.
Well, what happens, these deals are submitted to North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and you're competing across the whole state of North Carolina. And then so you'll have to compete, it'll probably be, how many jobs was submitted to Mark, you remember?
240.
Probably 240, and you might get 45 or 50, everything included with bonds and, and 9% deals. So it's a very competitive deal. So we've been fortunate enough that, you know, we've been able to figure out how to make these deals work. And so both of these deals will be submitted to North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. They'll be submitted in January. They'll take similar pass. They'll be asking for a final, you get preliminary first in January, then you have to do a final in May. Your site has to score. On the bond deal, you have to score 60 points, that's the magic number, and it's based off site evaluation, what's, you know, pharmacies, shopping, it's just a combination of things that has to score to get to 60 points. Both of these sites score well, and it's, it's a 60 points. So, but the bond deal stands alone, it's not like the senior deal. The bond deal stands alone by itself if they see that the numbers work. You don't have to tick no boxes off, you just pretty much will get awarded the job if, if the numbers work. The senior deal, you're in a very competitive analysis there, and it's never been, two deals done in Onslow County in any year, never. But because we're looking at doing a bond deal in one area and doing the senior deal in another area, so you got a 9% senior deal and a 4% bond deal, we think we're going to be successful in both of them, especially with the need for the seniors too, and it hasn't been one here in 10 years. So we feel really good about it. It's a special, unique opportunity for us to have to, to try to get it put together.
Other questions?
You mentioned a figure of the Connie study indicating that there's a need for 1,400-some units?
1,400 units.
1,400 affordable housing units. So the thought crossed my mind, I guess, is that with all that you have, you're hoping for and so on, I would think they should not impact the prospects of somebody redeveloping Town Center.
Well, that will probably be, I mean, I don't see that, if we have a bond deal here, I don't see another bond deal being submitted in the future. So, of course, any of these bond deals are not going to work without the commitment from the county. I'm the first to tell you that. We don't have to get the $5 million from the county, and it's not just partial, we got to have it all, because that's the only way the numbers work. So if we don't get the $5 million from them, you're not going to probably see another bond deal opportunity here, in my opinion. I mean, we're only talking about the bond deal because the county does have the $5 million to invest. So that's the only reason we're talking about a bond deal tonight.
Do you all manage your properties that are, as well?
Yeah, we have a company that's called Partnership Management Group, has been in business for about, they've been with us for about five years now. And they took over a community that we had up in Ashboro, North Carolina. We redid that community. By the way, it won North Carolina Housing Finance Agency Year at Award after we got through with it. And we ended up, we had one management company there, and we bought this other guy in, and we've been with him ever since. He's very well-known. He manages somewhere between 5 and 5,000 and 10,000 units a year, and so he is our partner. And so we take him wherever we go. But we personally don't manage him, but he manages him. And the reason we don't do that, because you got to know your specialties, right? And you got to jump through so many hoops on all these things, that's not our specialty. This is this guy's specialty, and that's what we do. We hire him, and he takes care of our community's voice.
But you own it?
Sir?
But you'll own this property?
We will own this property. We own, we own both of the ones out on Blue Creek School Road, and we own the one over on Fox Horn.
Does the state require you to hold them for so long?
Yes, we have, yes, we have to hold these. There's covenants, restrictive covenants, I think. Mr. Carter's already addressed those for 30 years. They have to stay affordable for 30 years. So...
Does that mean you have to hold them for 30 years, or you can sell them?
We can, we can sell them to another developer, but the covenants are still there. They have to remain in place, remain in place for 30 years. So...
Could you explain what you meant? You said 4%, 9%?
Yeah. So not 4%, it's just another terminology for bonds, bond funds. So bond funds are where your bigger projects happen. That there, you know, 180, 150 to 200, some of them you can get as high as 220. So that's where you usually see your bigger projects at. And, and you're limited, and when you go to a 9% deal, you're limited to the number of units that you can build. Like, see, we're limited over here on Blue Creek School Road. We can only build 80 units on that one project and 72 on the next one. So when you go to a 9% deal, you, they limit you how many units you can build in an area. So, but on a bond deal, as long as the numbers work, you can do what you want to. So that's the difference.
So the property manager, you say you just overtook another property in another area?
Yes.
You just bought, okay. Is that affordable housing?
Yes.
There?
Yes, sir.
Because one thing I've seen with some organizations that deal with affordable housing is they, the management company, they have to have, or at least be willing to deal with others in the community to fulfill the needs of the individuals that, that has the affordable housing, that are residents.
Yeah, I'm glad you answered that question, because we're required to have certain number of units set aside for certain, like, a lot of the multifamily, we still have to set some single-bedroom units aside, and we also have to do things for disadvantaged folks as well. So we build handicap units in our facilities so those folks can be serviced as well. In addition to the, to the 4% bond deal, you'll see a really nice clubhouse there, and it'll be self-contained, basically. And so you have a nice children's playground area there, you'll have workout rooms in the facilities, it, it'll be really nice. So, and in the senior complex, what we provide there is like big offices or big clubhouse, and it'll have, inside that 72-unit building, it'll have workout rooms, computer rooms, and, and meeting rooms, so the seniors can have, you know, they can stay right inside the building if they want to.
I'm more concerned about, like, North Carolina had a program, federal finance program called Hope Program.
Yeah.
And I know in some cases, you have property managers that didn't understand that program. So it made it difficult, actually, for the ownership as well as the, the tenants, because if that money wasn't used correctly, then both would suffer.
Yeah.
Also, you have a lot of mental illness with dealing with these folks, you know, with different, when you deal with affordable housing, with any housing. But if you're not, and I'm not saying that social workers need to be on this, on the facility, at the facility, but at least involved with collaboration to a sense, to assist these folks from a, from a customer service type of, you know, perspective, I guess I would say.
That's one thing North Carolina's Finance Agency requires us to do. We have to meet, when we do these, we do these covenants, there are certain things in there that are required of us to do it throughout the life of this facility. So we have to meet certain criteria, like we have to have so many one-bedroom units for, you know, folks with disabilities. And then that means you have to do the bathroom facilities differently, you have to do the hallways differently. I can't address your Hope issue, I think Mark could probably address that better than I can, but, and I'll be glad to let him talk about that specific issue, because I'm not familiar enough with that to give you a straight answer. So I'm going to let him talk about it, okay?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As far as a management company, working with the community, as James was mentioning, there are certain requirements for units to be set aside. There's a set aside for units that we would get referrals from a local lead agency, usually a mental health agency. We're required to keep those units vacant for a certain period of time. If there's a vacant unit, we need to hold it for a referral. If there's someone in the community that has, has a housing need related to disability or mental illness. So our management company is very familiar with working with local lead agencies on getting those referrals. With the, with the Hope funding during COVID crisis, there was a lot of, a lot of people who weren't able to pay, pay their rent. When the Hope funds came out, our, our management company was very proactive in, in working with residents, coming into the community building and helping them with paperwork to be able to apply for those funds. The way those funds were flowing, they were coming to a tenant. Some tenants were very easy to work with and eager to apply, but still, there was a small percentage of tenants that refused to even consider applying for the Hope funds because, you know, they, for various reasons. But across the board, we had pretty good success with receiving those funds to, to help pay rents and, of course, help cover, you know, debt, debt service.
The manager actually was aware of that?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
I think the, if I may, I think what Councilman Jackson, though, is stressing is this, it really comes down to having the right people manage these.
Absolutely.
You know, it's one thing for you and Mr. Mades and your company to own it, it's one thing for you to build quality. But if you don't have a good management company that the people who live there can go to every day and get their problems fixed, that's where the issue always resolves. Now, I won't mention a name, but many of you have seen an email that I answered yesterday or this morning, I think it was, on another issue about parking. or this morning, I think it was, on another issue about parking at a multifamily development. That management company apparently is not addressing that. Apartment complexes need to be properly managed. And I think that's the point Mr. Jackson is making. Am I understanding you correctly, sir?
Yes, sir.
And we did experience some poor management early on. No matter how great you build a development, a, a property manager that's not doing everything they need to be doing can wreck it real quick. And we saw that firsthand and it made it, made a change quickly. And we've been with the same management company ever since then. And they manage about 600 units for us.
What's your background, sir?
Sir, I'm a, a planner by education and trade. I was a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've worked on private planning, municipal planning. I spent 10 years working on affordable housing as a nonprofit. And I've been with James Maids Group for seven years now. My particular role is affordable housing construction and affordable housing development. Anything from land acquisition to concept planning, liaison work with architects and attorneys and engineers and then compliance throughout the program.
You also worked for a company that built affordable housing all over eastern North Carolina, didn't you?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we've built, uh, since I've been with East Point Homes and Carolina Statewide, we've built over $120 million worth of affordable housing.
He's also failing to tell you that he's a former city employee. That's where he got his training right there.
I was, I was saving that for last. I did work briefly for the Planning Department in Jacksonville.
Who was the manager who was wise enough to hire you?
Mr. Hagan. And shortly after his departure, I followed. Happy to answer any other questions.
Uh, when do you have to have this grant? October 15th, you said?
October 14th.
14th.
Sorry, when, when do we have to have what, sir?
The grant completed?
Uh, the grant, uh, the RFQ response goes in honorable for October 14.
You know, I would like to have more background concerning, uh, the authority. I wouldn't.
What, what can I answer to?
You said Tracy would know a little bit more about the background of that.
Oh, no.
Oh, about the housing authority?
Yeah, the, the housing authority. Or do you know about?
Oh, not the legal aspects, certainly not, but, uh, Mr. Carter's correct. The Eastern Regional Housing Authority in Goldsboro does have some units they manage here. Eastern Human Services also manages vouchers in the city and county. But the only housing authority at Noda has any involvement or coverage is Eastern Regional Housing Authority in Goldsboro. And I, I don't know that they even manage anything in, in the city limits. It's just in our service area.
We'll be happy to get your information on this.
Other questions?
I have one. And I'm not a Realtor, but what does this do to all the taxpayers who live in the Commons? Is this putting multifamily there going to affect their value in their homes? I know they would not be too happy about that if we put this right there.
No, uh, we get that questions a lot. We've seen, this is probably a unique situation because as Dr. Woodruff stated, everything around it has already developed. Most often get that concern when we go in to propose something where there's vacant tracks next to us. And in some cases, I've had appraisers come in who've done analysis that show property values actually will increase when affordable housing development is created on, on a vacant track. So I, I don't know of any negative impacts to any property values.
And the other thing is, remember, uh, this is not adjacent to single-family homes. That's normally where you get the greatest concern is where a person owns a single-family home and you're getting an affordable project very close to it.
Maybe a lot of people that drive right past this to get to their homes. A lot of people have rental properties there and I wonder how to be concerned. I mean, you, you sell this land to them and, you know, that might upset a lot of people.
Well, it, it might. And that's certainly one of the reasons why, you know, the, the process, we look at it from a staff standpoint of, is it a reasonable place to put multifamily? I would say to you that when these units are built, if you agree to sell, they will be comparable to any multifamily, whether it's for-profit, normal market rate or whether it's not. If you look at the multifamily units that are adjacent to it, those units, if my memory is correct, I've been here almost 12 years, all of those multifamily units that are over there are much older than the time that I've served. And all of the single-family homes that are over on that side were built, I believe, prior to my coming. They are good quality neighborhoods. This, I believe, as a manager and as a planner, is going to be a good neighbor to them. Everybody will have their opinion though. I'm sorry?
The rent rate is double the price. The apartment companies will back up to it. So you know, a lot of people might be upset about that.
Well, they might be. I would also say to you that, you know, if you look at it from a tax standpoint, this will be a development that will pay property tax. This is a for-profit group that you're selling to, not a nonprofit group. Am I correct, Mark, that y'all will pay city taxes? Okay.
And one other thing, if you approve one or both of these tonight, one of the conditions is that it has to be rezoned. Well, who does the rezoning? Well, it's not the redevelopment commission. But y'all will come back as a city council and there'll be notice given out to all the adjacent property owners. So you can see at that time, if you get folks coming out for a rezon and they say no, you, you have that kind of a second stop, if you will, that if you don't feel like that's the way to go after you hear from those folks. So you really get another chance to look at it because there will be a rezoning presently as office and institutional.
Yes, sir.
And the rezon would be to multifamily. And that may well be in front of you if you do approve this tonight at your October 19th meeting is what we're trying to work there. But again, you'll, you'll get to look at that. So if you do have concerns from neighbors or property owners nearby, then...
Yeah, but at that point, we'd have already agreed to a price.
It's a condition of sale, sir.
There would be a condition that, in other words, if you decide at that point you didn't want to rezon it, then they are not able to move forward. Pure, the contractor's gone. So that's what I'm saying. You've got two, really two ways to look at it at that time, if you get that kind of input or from, from that neighborhood.
So actually, we have an opportunity for the citizens to have their say concerning this issue.
For the rezon, yes, that's correct.
Any other questions, sir? All right, yeah. I think we're being asked to take some action here and that would be in the form, would you phrase a motion?
Yes, sir. I just want to make, if the council accepts a recommendation, the senior agenda item we fail to add and would need to be added, and both restrictive covenants as well as those two agreements. If that's the way you want to go, if you want to make another motion, I'll try to help walk through it because there's a restrictive covenant that goes with the 11-acre tract because that's affordable housing and a different restrictive covenant, but still 30 years on both of them, that goes with the smaller tract because that's senior affordable housing. But anyway, we work with a lawyer out of Winston-Salem in, in reviewing this, who is Mr. Maids attorney and so forth. So there's two restrictive covenants and two agreements there.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase and sales agreements for both tracks at the discounted rates, that we also adopt Resolution A, which is the two parcels as well as the restrictive covenants. Is that good?
You did fine.
Second. Motion in second. Is there any further discussion?
You know, I'm still...
I mean, I think we're making a decision too quickly, to be honest with you.
I feel that way too.
Maybe for that discount price. I mean, I think we need the, I think we need them. I agree with that. I think it's just a quick decision that fast, to be honest with you.
And I understand the deadline, but I was wondering if there's something we could actually still do prior to that deadline, after we get some more additional information. What are you...
What's the additional information you'd like, sir?
Well, I would like to go back to history, like the information you're supposed to, you know, bring forth concerning, uh, the housing authority that we're working with.
Remember, the housing authority that he referred to, and we can certainly get, and we will get that information for you, that doesn't set aside your authority as a housing authority. That's a regional housing authority. You still have the ability to act. We can certainly provide you with information tomorrow that shows you how many units they have or have not built. And I think what you're going to find is it's a pitiful number. There are very few units built inside the city of Jacksonville that this regional housing authority has done. And we will be very happy to get all that information.
When you think of housing authority, when you think of Durham's housing authority and some of the larger cities, what happens in those communities, a couple of things. A housing authority has a larger umbrella than a redevelopment commission.
Right.
Durham would turn over surplus land to the housing authority because they can't deal with it. So the housing authority can either develop it, build their own units, manage their own units because I think housing authorities do all of those components, or they can do RFPs and get other developers to come in and to do it like that. Again, because they have the authority to sell it at a discounted price with a private sale, et cetera. Here, the city council is not a housing authority, and maybe that's the misnomer. By statute and by the code, you are a redevelopment commission. Your role, and the only role that you can play, because you're not set up to be a housing authority, as I said when I was standing at the podium, you're not set up to rent out units, to build units, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Many things that a housing authority would do. Your role is to either accept, again, an offer or not accept an offer, but you have the authority to do that with a private sale, with a nonprofit or a for-profit, and you can do it at a discounted price if you feel that's appropriate. But again, your role is totally different than, a, a housing authority has a much more comprehensive role than the redevelopment commission role that you're playing tonight. Just want to make that clear.
These two, the community development departments, you know, gives us more information to get a better understanding of, you know, even deal with these issues. And I feel like I'm just missing a lot of stuff and I can't put my hands on it right now. I don't know, just to, I don't know, making this decision this quick. But I totally understand why the meeting was called because of the deadline.
Yes.
Well, we have a motion in a second. I'm going to call and vote on this. All those in favor, the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Show your names. Two? With that, entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.